For executive session this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue last week or two weeks ago's executive session discussion of the Rec Department.
I have been asked to bring something up personnel-wise on the mosquito district.
Okay. I'll make a note how we ended angles go into the executive session.
Is that good?
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Post is carried. Do we have a need to amend the agenda?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Post is carried. Act on Subboard Meeting Missup June 3, 2020. Any changes, additions, repressions in those minutes?
Yeah.
Next are the orders. Any questions on the orders?
Couple things to mention, Mr. Chairman, on orders. With regard to the Boobobile license plate or license or registration renewal, Pat and Liz did a bit of research, learned that that is a five-year registration vanity plate. In case people were wondering about costs associated with it, it can be thought to have spread over to five years. Second, we may, emphasize may, need select board signatures the first, one of the first two days of the month, the week of June 29th, because that'll be fiscal year-end accounts payable that need to be paid before the new fiscal year begins July 1st, which is our next meeting. So stay tuned, we may need to make some phone calls to get some signatures.
No other questions?
I see there's, there was a refund on the trail run donation of $500. What might that be?
Yeah, Boondocks, I think, was the one. They offered some money as a sponsor for the event, and when the event got canceled, of course, we gave everybody the opportunity to get their donation refunded.
I had a question on the crack ceiling. Where did we crack seal?
I can't tell you the list of roads. Chad, you chair, might be able to. Are you able to, Chad?
The, was that the crack ceiling?
Yes.
That's the list of roads for the crack ceiling?
Yes.
Yeah. Plains Road, Puton, Toronto, Pine Wood, Parker, Creed, and Hudson Terrace.
Thanks, Chad.
Anything else?
There's a West Crook, a Rest, West Creek culvert stock, 3,900, and is that something we're getting ahead?
It's a combination. We've done some West Creek road culvert replacement, and that is to use up the remaining grant funds we have on a Better Roads grant from last year. And as you saw, you said the word "stock." Part of that money was to do those culverts, which will be reimbursed for. The other part is to have some on stock, some in stock.
Are we done? Well, there's two of them way behind.
He doesn't look at those two, he just looks at Joe and I.
Well, I can't look at myself if I don't have a mirror.
Dave, that's what you say, consider yourself my peep.
No, I'm, no, I'm not that peep. I'm not that peep, sorry.
That's debatable.
Well, I am.
We know that.
Oh, that's it.
Oh, they're terrible.
So I can read and they...
I know, let me plug up.
Couple there, Joe, one table.
And Hank, I don't know about whether you want to, but under, under your authority, you can rejigger the agenda order as we have two guests with us today.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we will.
Okay, thank you.
That is our usual practice?
Yeah.
Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Thursday, June 4th, and again yesterday, June 16th, I and the bookkeeper met with the leadership of Pittsburgh First Response to discuss plans to integrate their operations into town government. At the first meeting, we discussed the need to transfer property on Arch Street and to transfer responsibility for bills and from vendors and service providers. We also discussed how we will interact with their leadership going forward. Again, at the meeting tomo, yesterday, we did sign the deed. So the town now owns that property, including land and building, 256 Arch Street. And we had further discussions on how to put all the right insurances in place for the July 1 official transition date. So we may want to start thinking about longer-term planning for use of the building and improvements we might want to make, and that's a discussion that we can have another time. But things are moving along in the right direction on that. The town manager and the highway foreman met with two contractors interested in potentially bidding on the town's village sidewalk and curb restoration project. It's a disappointing number. We did reach out specifically with newspaper ads and emails directly to usual big operation contractors like Markowski and Belden. We talked to the asphalt people, since they're the ones who might be producing a lot of that material. But unfortunately, we only had two contractors show up. Hopefully, we will get good competitive bids, and we can review those on July 1st. They're due on June 25th. The recreation director has made the difficult decision to cancel day camp this summer. He were decent company, because both camps, Sangamon and Betsy Cox, have also come to that difficult conclusion. Just that while those are permitted, there are so many rules and regulations that it probably would take most of the fun out of it and make it a lot more expensive and hard to sustain. So those were the reasoning, that was the reasoning behind that decision. Planning for swimming with lifeguards is going forward within compliance with the governor's COVID-19 rules. And I'm told by Chief Hooker that the fire department, the host company, has decided not to have their annual haunted house fundraising event this year. So that's another sad casualty of our pandemic. There will be a staff meeting tomorrow, Thursday, June 18th, at 9:00 a.m., socially distanced and remotely for those who are not coming in, with some staff here in person and call, others calling in, as I mentioned. As always, selectmen are invited to attend. The normal monthly meeting of the Water and Sewer Commission that would have taken place the third Tuesday of the month yesterday was postponed one week and will be held Tuesday, June 23rd, at 6:30. The reason was to give us some time to evaluate meter-reading information to determine whether we might want to adjust rates if there's been a surge in use such that we would normally see a windfall of revenue that we don't need or didn't budget for. So we don't, I don't know what those numbers are. The meters were being read yesterday and today. Tomorrow, I should have a better idea, and we'll present some options to the Water and Sewer Commission at that Tuesday meeting. The bio-retention pond project that we talked about with Barbara Noyes pulling by phone at our select board meeting of a couple times ago is moving forward. I met with Barbara and with landowner and abutter Bill Bowman on site yesterday. We had a good visit. Bill was kind enough to provide a letter of consent authorizing any encroachments on his property for this design phase of the project or scope or engineering study portion of the project. Markowski has applied for an Act 250 permit, giving them permission to take sand out of their Parker Farm location off Bella Vista Road for extraction of sand, a place to put fill and to store equipment and machinery during the Route 7, Segment 1 upgrade event that's taking place now. In terms of permitting, the folks behind Corn Hill Solar Farm have given us a 45-day advance notice of plans to file their application with the state. So stay tuned for further updates. We will certainly be an interested party. And when the time comes to talk about screening and all kinds of aesthetic issues, we can have a say in those. Finally, town offices and services will be closed Friday, July 3rd, and the transfer station will be closed on Saturday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day.
Questions or comments for John on his report?
I've had this question asked to me numerous times in the last couple weeks. When will the town office begin to open up for more regular business?
I was going to discuss that with you under COVID-19, but we can do it now. You'll see in tonight's packet, a collection of emails I've had recently from other town managers, city managers, administrators, as to what they're doing. The guidance, there's no specific guidance from the governor's office about municipal offices. There is about general social distancing and retail establishments, which are sort of analogous to our situation. What we've been doing so far is responding to people knocking on the door, but generally encouraging people to use the phone, email, and our Dropbox, which is outside the building, to process transactions like dump stickers and dog licenses and that kind of thing. We have increased folks' ability to have office access for staff, simply because most of us have four walls within which we can be located for most of the day and not pose a risk to anybody else. Hallways, common areas are more of a concern. That's why face masks are being required, and we're doing more cleaning at the town office building. But we do, we have adopted a plan to deal with public access when the time comes. My thought would be that we would do it in a two-step process. First, inviting all staff to come back and begin working their full office hours again because of this distancing that we have. And then perhaps within a week or so, letting the public know that they can come in. But we have to have some things in place. We do have a sneeze guard, so to speak, at the clerk's office desk now. And I'm thinking that we could open the building to the public, and the clerk's office, which has some say in this matter, of course, can limit access within their confined space to maybe one customer at a time with maybe blue tape on the floor denoting six-feet distances heading out the door of the front of the building. So that's kind of the approach we intend to take. I wouldn't be surprised if we start that two-step process as early as next week. But I want to do, I want to take the temperature of the other town managers just to make sure we're not too far ahead of the curve or doing something that we haven't thought through. So I'll be able to talk to town managers in person Friday at a meeting.
John, don't we also have to track people as they come in, temperature? There's an information sheet they've got to fill out.
We definitely are required to do that for our staff.
Right.
Restaurants where you're going to stay and linger, do the contact tracing. Barber shops do that. But I don't think that it would be required to...
And all they're doing is the police academy and the fire academy. They make one in those villages who have to sign in.
These are, these are exactly the kind of questions we can ask of the other managers.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hello.
Oh, yeah, very well late.
You're fine.
So thank you for that. I will make specific inquiry about that.
Any other questions for the town manager? Select board member remarks of any? Okay, public comment. Anybody have any public comment this evening? Okay, we're going to switch the agenda up, and we're going to go to Lee Carr's Considered Proposal from the Brandon Reporter. Lee, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me? You guys are cutting it out a little bit.
Yeah, we can, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Lee Carr, I'm managing editor of the Reporter newspaper. Cover of Brandon, Pittsburgh, Proctor, West Cleveland, Googin', Sudbury, Hawaii, and Lester. And I've come up with an expansion plan for the Reporter. Add eight pages called Community Corner. And basically, what it would be is partnering with local stakeholders and having sponsorship to support adding the cost of adding the pages to the paper. And in return, Community Corner would be something that I think everybody's kind of craving right now. I had this idea before the pandemic started. But then, when the pandemic came, it was even kind of now more than ever, people were looking for that community connection and connection to their neighbors that they're missing. And this would be one way to do that in the pages of the Reporter by reaching out to the town and the school district, the supervisory union, and the nonprofits and individuals who want to buy sponsorship to support their community newspaper. And what the section would contain is kind of more of a old-school newspaper. What used to find newspaper, like everything from events and fundraisers from the towns and any news items that you want to put in, like the Pittsburgh newsletter, the Perfect Fodder, or the kind of content I'm looking to fill of the particular pages. But also, the school district, like when the schools infection, parents essays, kids essays, student of the week, but also household hacks and gardening columns, pet corners, cooking tips and recipes. Think we're going to do something called Sunday Drive, which is giving directions to like three local locations and attractions to check out like major trails, picnic spots, and stuff like that. And it's kind of an evolving list right now, and I'm sure it's going to grow exponentially starting with an eight-page expansion. Our press is in Quebec, so the only way to expand is by eight-page increments. So I have to go from a 15-page paper to a 24-page paper, there's nothing in between. So that's why, and that's a lot of content. So this way, it's gathering more content from the individual towns. I personally, as you know, I do all the writing, I do all the photography, and I kind of rely on members of the community to give me things that I can't get to. And this would kind of be like a more extended version of that, like what's going to where. And the way the pandemic has caused this is to not maybe buy so many ads anymore. And this is kind of a, a different way of funding community journalism in the local newspaper. And there wouldn't necessarily be any ads in this section. It would only be things that are garden or trees or trees. But it would be underwritten by, like I said, the towns and nonprofits, individuals who want to support the reporter. And that is what I am proposing. I'm looking at a July, the first, the first Community Corner will come out next month. And we'll do it, first it'll do once a month, just to see how it goes. But I'm sure it'll end up being a weekly thing. And in the long run, it will make the paper more attractive, I think. Not necessarily circulation for garner more readers and subscriptions, but also to, you know, businesses who use it to cover. I'll increase circulation, and maybe like businesses who do want to buy ads, we'll buy more ads. And then we'll all have a bit of use. And that is the goal. And that's my pitch.
So what do you need the slugboard to do?
Well, I'm asking, I have a proposal out, I think John shared with you my, the release that kind of outlines this plan. And we're asking for sponsorship. It's basically what any municipality or individual or nonprofit feels they can afford. I kind of loosely base it on our ad prices. This is a full-page ad, it's $340. A half-page is $167, a quarter-page is $87, and an eight-page is $44. Any increments that Pittsburgh and the town would like to kind of approve for sponsorship to help underwrite this section and experiment reporter. So it's kind of you looking at your budget and seeing if this is something you're interested in doing and if you care for to do it, or if you want to do it. Any legal ads that you would want to take out? The rest of the paper is running in the same. I still have part of yours increasing from the other pages of the paper. And that would all be the same report section, or it could just be in addition to the report.
If I don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I have three questions. First, the numbers you're talking about in terms of the ads in the paper, presumably, you're going to continue to be a weekly paper, so whatever the town might want to do, that would be a commitment to spend that money, that much money each week, right?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at monthly.
A monthly bill.
Right now.
Okay, at a monthly publication of this kind, I got you. Second question, second question, just in terms of your own finances, are you pursuing any kind of state money that has come from the federal government, perhaps? I know some newspapers who are having trouble with ad revenues have gone that route.
Yes, in fact, I am. I am looking, and Stephanie might be able to help me with this. I'm looking into a couple of different grants, because we may fall under, you know, the community development umbrella. But I'm also talking to people in the arts, nonprofits, whether it was some kind of tax incentive to sponsor the reporter. So yes, I am looking at grants and other revenue ideas.
And the third question is, what kind of commitments do you have from other towns?
I have commitments from Wettland Northeast Supervisory Union. I have a proposal in front of the Brandon Select Board, but I haven't pursued the commitment yet. And I have a proposal in front of Lester. And there's some waiting to get her back to them. I have yet to pitch Proctor. Both Brandon and Pittsburgh were at the top of my list, just because I cover, there's a lot going on there. I feel like, and I feel like I want to, I need to cover more with Pittsburgh and Proctor. And this would go a long way to doing that. The best part about it is it's content I don't necessarily have to create myself. It's content that, you know, we would, we would use our contacts in each town, and they would send me the content, and I, all I do is edit it for style and put it in there. But the coverage improves it up, and I haven't to try and do more journalism, because I don't want to be doing a lot. I'm trying to get that.
Like a good thing?
No, I'm answer.
Okay, so you ready for questions for between us?
Who's this, Stephanie?
Sorry, I'm, I'm, sorry, say that again?
I didn't know who, I heard somebody on the phone, I'm not sure who it was.
I had my thought on you, but I don't think it was me. But did you have, did you have a personal question for me?
Well, we may, I don't know.
Lee, I'll let you know about the grants that are coming through shortly. Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, I guess, does, does anybody know how much our newsletter costs us every year? I mean, I'm throwing this out, maybe this is another avenue that might actually save us some money to get that information out to people. It would help the newspaper out, and it would save the town money, depending on what our news, I mean, I don't know what our newsletter costs us to put out, what, four times a year, three, four? Four times a year. I think that's...
I could get you those numbers I don't have with me, sorry.
Are you saying in lieu of?
In lieu of, yes, yeah. Because, I mean, we could still, the newsletter could still be online, so people could get it. But rather than having to print it, mail it, do all that work, the articles could just go to Lee, and they'd be in the paper. And, you know...
Also, that's also that I am planning to kind of increase our social media presence, which is, you know, kind of waves. We've never really been, you know, we've been pretty old-school for the last twelve years. But our website, they can be using our Facebook page a lot more to get the word out. And of course, the website should be improved as well.
We, we have a website right now, I believe.
We do.
And does anybody have any idea how, how much that is used or what it covers? Is that really...
Hello?
Doing a good job, or?
Lee, I got you, I hear you. Okay, you're in the one.
I think a number of people use it, yeah.
Joe, there's probably ways for us to get, get information about, you know, clicks or, you know, attention or visits to the website, that kind of data. We could get that for you, along with the cost to maintain that as well. That would give you a fuller conversation about all your other alternatives, yeah.
I missed the first part of that, but I understand.
Joe was asking about our website and how this might interact, or what kind of resources we throw at that.
Oh, I see. Well, we could certainly provide a link.
Yep.
The newsletter idea is interesting. That's definitely worth talking about some more, I think.
I'm not impossible to, no, what you're telling us, for me, I can't understand it.
I know, this is...
I can't hear either very well, but...
We could certainly gather more information for a continued discussion.
I think so.
And maybe in two weeks' time, Lee might have some more commitments that we can compare our situation to.
Could somebody come and give us a presentation, I mean...
That's fine.
Maybe Lee could even come to our next meeting. It's easier to hear.
We can, we can have one, maybe, one, maybe two guests here in person. Would you be able to come in our next meeting?
I would be honored to be with Lee.
We're going to put you in the corner, though. Behind the door.
Behind the door, next to the copier.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we do that? John will get us the numbers. That way, we can compare.
Yep.
Because I think, I think, I don't know, I don't, I think that would be a good idea, you know, to not have to do that. Because that's got to cost us more than what this is, I would think.
Yeah, there's no question. No question.
So...
It is kind of, it is kind of the dinosaur approach that we take now.
Yeah.
All right, Lee, we'll see you in two weeks.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Lee.
Of course, I felt the same way about the town report. And remember, we tried to get people to accept a two-page sheet, examine it, and with an email possibility for the town report, and everybody insisted on continuing to get their eighty-page booklet so they could throw it in their recycling.
I know, that's what happens with most of it.
Stephanie, if you've got anything, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, I couldn't make it off of you. So I guess what I wanted to talk about is all this COVID relief money that's coming through. I've been working on, this is, seventy million dollars.
You're breaking up. We're not...
Stephanie, we can't really hear you, you're cutting out.
Can you hear me now, Stephanie?
That's better.
Yeah.
I'll just go through to my phone. So I, I'm, I'm looking for the best way that, I want to get the information out to the most people. And so when I understand that the applications are ready for this COVID relief money for businesses, where, what's the best way to get it out to the Pittsburgh community so that the most, I can make sure that people are applying for this relief money?
We have a COVID-19 page which lists the state agencies... We have a COVID-19 page which lists the state agencies that can be of assistance, and the regional ones to local businesses, like the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, and ACCD. If you wanted to write up a blurb, I could link it to that.
Okay, I could do that, certainly, but I guess my, my concern is this, is that there is not going to be enough money to go around the businesses that need the money. So I want to make sure that the businesses, like the communities that I represent, are going to act fast.
Well, unlike, unlike, unlike...
Apply the grant as soon as possible.
Unlike Brandon...
I guess that's what I was thinking, like, if I could send it to the Select Board Chair or the Town Manager, could you then disperse it to the businesses that are registered in the community?
Well, the problem is, we don't have a Chamber of Commerce, we used to, in Pittsburgh, but we don't have a Chamber of Commerce. So there's, there's no local business group that we can distribute it through.
So, okay, so I'll just do, I'll do best I can, I mean, I'll, I'll send it to everyone I, of course, you know, I have, I have a number of your emails. I will send the information out, I'll put it on my Facebook page, and I'll, I'll send the information out. It's just that I really want to be able to help as many businesses as possible.
Sure. Well, you know, we do have a, we do have a Facebook...
The best, I guess, well, I'll just use the, the contacts I have already in Pittsburgh, and hopefully then, if anyone could just, if you could put on the Facebook page in Pittsburgh, and I'll put on my page, and your newsletter, and then I, I guess it'll work that way.
Okay.
Well, I think...
The money will be starting to come out in July, beginning of July, the first wave of it, and then another wave, I think, will be out in beginning of August.
Okay.
Well, I think Stephanie, if you were to email it to those of us, at least on the Select Board, I mean, word of mouth, we can get some of it out, too.
That's what I'm saying, we can just go out to the businesses.
But we need, you know, we need the information for us to get it out.
Yeah, I don't, we take, we take care of the Facebook page, right?
Yes.
So maybe that would be a good spot.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, so I, I just want to keep, keep in top of mind, and get the information out to, because it's so important, and so many businesses are hurting so terribly right now, that I want to be able to make sure that this, you know, our, our little town get, aren't, gets some access to this money.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm sorry, my connection's a little bit poor, um, but I, as soon as I find out more information, I will, I will send it, I'll send it out to you.
Great, thanks.
But also, I want to make sure that people understand that the PTP program has been extended twenty-four weeks. It was eight weeks, and so now people who maybe sent their money back and didn't want to take advantage of it, are now eligible to reapply and can take that money and have a longer payback period.
Twenty-four weeks, is that what you said?
Twenty-four weeks. It's a lot more palatable for businesses, especially restaurants who aren't open or just starting to open, that they can reapply, get some money, because there is money now, and then they have, you know, until December, right, to, to pay it back.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Actually, to use it up, it's really not payback, it's to use it up.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Stephanie, keep us posted.
All right, I'll try to keep you posted, um, with information, and, uh, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Bye-bye. Next is consider the intersection at Adams and Oxbow Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the first time I've heard of a highway foreman suggesting less road rather than more. But I took a trip out there, I don't know how many of the rest of you have, to that intersection. And it has apparently morphed from a regular intersection, which used to be smaller, and has expanded over time. Chad's explanation to me was that it used to be a Y intersection. They filled it in, and it's become a real no-man's land.
I think, I think I came over to Bob that, and someone was, and he needed someone to land his airplane.
Oh, is that right? That's the approach. Well, Chad, why don't you tell us more about your thinking on it?
Okay, um, because the thing is, save us, uh, time and materials in winter maintenance, and as well, when we pave the road, hopefully, a couple of years. Uh, just narrowing it down, I had the, met with a couple of guys from VTRAN, came, measured it out to a proper width. So it'll just require us, uh, cutting the excess pavement, digging that out, adding some topsoil in there, just for, uh, let's get rid of the pavement, and that's pretty much it. You know, be a little change for traffic, will be able to make quite as wide as a turn, but it's still leaving with plenty of room for both directions.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I know.
I, I grew up there on my way coming here, and it is a hell of a wide, wide apron there. But you know, I don't think that's any problem. You go up towards the Chittenden-Pittsburgh Town Line, and you've got them S-curves up there. And if they want to make something better, they ought to start looking at that. I think it would be good for this whole group of us to go up there some, on some little trip. I don't know if we can do anything or not, but you know what I mean, where you go around them, you almost meet yourself going around them corners up there. That's in the town of Pittsburgh, the Town Line is just past that. And it's a wonder they don't have some collisions there, and maybe they do. But this apron we're talking about, uh, it gives people a chance to pull over if they want to let somebody go by. They don't have to plow that, every bit of that blacktop in the winter if they don't want to. They could plow off just what they feel is necessary, leave some of that. It is ridiculously wide, but has it caused any problems? I, I think rather than spend money tearing that down, and monkeying around, moving material in and out, I think our dollars, which we don't have a lot to throw away anyway, I think would be better off spent up on them S-curves up there, if it's at all possible. That's where the, the safety, and the, it's a wonder they don't have accidents up there. I don't know if there's any heavy equipment goes up there, there not too much. Maybe the Fish Hatchery gets some heavy trucks up there once in a while. But how the hell they get around them S-curves is, with a tractor trailer, and I have put a tractor trailer around there, I gotta have the whole damn road. And if somebody's coming, they have to stop. And you take one of your big fire trucks up there, and you're gonna have to have the whole road. There's where, if there's any dollars need to be spent, that's what ought to be looked at. Maybe there's nothing can be done up there. But I think, I would suggest that this panel right here, sometime, take a ride up there together and look at it. Like I say, maybe we can't do anything about it, but maybe we can.
How about, how about you, Chad? Why did you, why did this end up on the top of your to-do list? And do you have anything that can be done in, toward the Chittenden line, as Joe's talking about?
Um, yeah, I mean, take a look, it, yeah, definitely, definitely could be improving. You know, we got a creek around the corner during the wintertime, so, yeah, we need to... See what we can do about that.
Hasn't that S-curve washed out too, Chad, before?
I don't know if somebody could do a little windy chew to try to widen it.
Chad, did you hear that?
Washed out, um, not, that I'm lawyer, huh?
Okay, okay, I knew there was, I thought there was a spot up there somewhere that had washed out not too long ago. Maybe not, maybe I'm thinking of a different spot.
Are we, I mean, we're talking, are we talking Furnace, or like, maybe am I on the right road?
Furnace, yeah, well...
You talking about Furnace Road, Joe?
Well, it gets before you get to Chittenden Town Line on the Furnace Road.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm on the wrong, am I on the wrong road?
No, Furnace.
Furnace Road up near Chittenden.
No, I'm on, I'm, well, I'm on the wrong, because I'm thinking Oxbow. S-curves in Oxbow, those are...
That's not as bad.
Well, that's not, then, okay. That's not as bad as Furnace, okay.
We're taking a virtual tour through all the town roads now.
That's something we should do someday.
Well, we probably, yeah, we should.
That's something we should do.
Yeah.
But, yeah, why is this, why is this, why is this on your radar, Chad?
Chad, you there? You might have dropped out.
Yeah, maybe we dropped out, we did that before.
We did, I think we dropped out. Told you.
What do you, Chad?
Goes around them S-curves up there with a snowplow.
Oh, that's tighter now.
Nobody better be coming the other way, they're gonna have to stop, back up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a nasty place up there.
It is, it's a whole place.
I don't go up there very often, but...
Welcome, and thank you for joining. If you are the host, please, under your pin, follow... Thank you, there is one other participant in the conference.
Hey, Chad, are you there?
Please announce yourselves.
John Haverstock, is this you, Chad?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, we lost you. We were basically taking...
Just a break again.
Yeah, we were taking a tour through town and the other roads, but now we're back to this one. I'm just curious why this got on your radar, and what did the folks at VTRAN say? Did they think this was an important project? And do you have any idea what it would cost to do what you want to do?
Um, really, the only expense is, will be our labor. So in removing the, remove the asphalt, we have, uh, topsoil, material, already a transfer station that I put back in, and following a little bit of speed mulch, feed it back down to grass. Uh, that'll end up saving us money when we do repave. Uh, VTRAN, it, I mean, they, it's not assumed unnecessary to be that, that wide of an intersection. I mean, it's not really no safety issue or whatever. Well, in some, some degree there is, if cars coming up Adams and trying to go up towards Chittenden-Oxbow.
Yeah, there's no...
You know, they kind of have to actually cross over, so someone coming up Oxbow to turn left onto Adams, potential for something there. But I mean, there is that, but I mean, it's, now the traffic's minor. Yeah, I don't know, just kind of after doing Humphrey Road intersection, and seeing that one being so, so large, kind of made me question it a little bit.
The visibility is excellent there, there's no problem far as visibility goes.
The reason I really wanted you guys to be involved in this discussion is because my thought is that, while it's not a burning issue, and it might be an improvement, we probably will hear from the locals who like things just the way they are, and I would rather hang with all five of you along with me.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, no problem.
I think if you could get a public poll, you'd find people would love to have them court curves up above worked on, more than they would that intersection.
But I think, I think what Chad's trying to say is, at some point in time, we're gonna repave that.
Yeah.
Well, so by consolidating it down, that's gonna give us some money, because from what he's saying...
Winter maintenance.
Well, and winter maintenance, too, but as far as the actual cost of remove, of downsizing that, there is none. So I think maybe, you know, the saving on paving and winter maintenance will give us some money to put towards fixing the S-curves.
Yeah, well, you give us more conformity for the other...
Yeah.
In town.
It's too bad there wasn't a way of...
Because we did Furnace Road.
People that travel it all the time getting their opinion on it.
Yeah, we've just done Humphrey.
We just did Humphrey, we did Furnace Road, so maybe that's the next one.
Well, yeah, well, if they're watching, we may.
Yeah, after.
If it's not gonna cost us money, I'd say do it.
Well, yeah, we usually get it after we do the work.
That's the problem.
You guys got it after you did the work.
I agree, it's way too wide.
Yeah, it's way too wide.
And it is confusing, if somebody's coming up...
You and I, Dave, probably don't travel that more than ten times in a year, anyway.
Well, I don't travel, no, I've probably traveled it five times in my entire life, so...
Well, if it's not gonna cost us money, I'd be in favor of doing it, I guess. It's gonna save money.
Well, if it's gonna, if it's gonna say, it's not gonna cost us any now and save us money in a few years.
That sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion, or is this something you want him to do?
No, I think I see a consensus.
See a consensus.
I do, too.
And then we want to be like Joseph, be looking at those...
Yes.
Curves up there, Chad, see what we can do up there.
I think Chad has heard you loud and clear.
Maybe there's something you could be doing there, in the meantime, filling and stuff, you know, I don't know.
Get on the right spot, my, is that on Oxbow, down the upper pavement part, by just below Go Farm Road, is that the curve you guys?
No, we're talking, we're talking on, uh...
Going up to the Fish Hatchery.
On Furnace Road, Chad, before the...
Okay, all right.
Furnace before the Chittenden Line. On some of those bad corners up there, whether they could be, you know, widened up a little bit, some of the banks taken off, added on the other side, whatever, something you gotta look at.
Yeah, definitely look into that.
It's all legs.
Yeah.
It is.
It's never been, it's never been overhauled for...
Not since I've been here.
...regulation.
That's why they're gonna cost you small fortunes.
Probably.
And there may be some land acquisition problems.
Don't cost, anything to look, though.
Anything to look at.
Okay, we're gonna put that one to bed?
Yep. That's done.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Okay, thank you.
What else you got on our virus response?
Hang up the phone.
Nobody.
You don't like the music?
No, no.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, so back to the coronavirus response, I think we had most of that discussion already. Just pointing out again that, um, there has been an increase in actual office hours here. I'd say it's, for some of us, it's almost full-time, and for the others, it's probably a little bit more than halftime here, and the rest of it at home. Mostly, um, uh, the issues now are cancellation of summer recreation programs because of the difficulties in mounting them successfully. And we continue to compare notes with other towns and see what other rec areas are doing. I know Randy's on pretty frequent interactions with the state and his colleagues around the region about things like baseball, for example, coming up. And again, I would encourage you to look at the emails in tonight's packet from the other town managers. It's a pretty good list of who's doing what. West Rutland is the only town that has, to my understanding, opened, and that was just this past Monday. City of Rutland has not, Middlebury has not, and Bristol is kind of where Pittsburgh is right now. But we're comparing notes, trying to be sure that we do it right. Mr. Chairman? Okay. We had the other issue, which is the municipal finances, and that's probably a good thing for me to highlight, is just the fact that there is a memo in the packet, which kind of gives, not an exhaustive list, but just a list of items that could be cut. I'm not necessarily advocating for any of them, but I want to give you guys as much information as I can. So I've given you the entire budget, and I've also given you a list of where some of the big-ticket items are that might not have an immediate adverse impact to town operations. And a lot of those have to do with longer-term investments in capital, like highway truck fund, bridge fund, fire department fund, police cruiser fund for their trucks, for their new cruisers. We certainly would feel a pinch in those areas at some point, but it might be a way for short-term savings to be recognized. So you've seen the memo, the bottom line of the memo is that you have lots of options, everything from delayed tax bills, delayed tax payment bills, possible short-term interest-free borrowing, with the state now agreeing to pay us the, any interest and costs we have in borrowing, if we have cash flow problems. We also have the latitude not to conduct tax sales, as we have in the past. And finally, we do have the option to cut the budget. But the reason I say we have time is that those bills can't go out until early to mid-August, anyway, because that's when we're gonna get the education tax rates. So it does give us several more meetings to think about it, and to have discussions, debates, and votes if necessary.
Is that in the right direction?
Chad, the budget that we, was passed at town meeting...
Yep.
That's golden, that's not gonna get touched, is it?
You can touch it.
You can touch it.
Yes, under the COVID-19 rules that the legislature have passed... Yes, the, under the COVID-19 rules that the legislature have passed, they've waived the requirement to go back to the people. You can make those decisions if you want to make changes to the budget. You can also change the dates on which taxes are collected.
They wonder, well, didn't they propose to have a, like a town meeting somewhere to redo their budget? Was that Burlington or something?
The state was recommending that, I think, the state, uh, that the towns be authorized to have, um, reworking of their education budgets. I think that was part of the legislative process in Montpelier and I don't think, um, a lot of people were too excited about having that option. That's how I understood it, a couple of weeks ago.
A big question, I believe, that's out there is we don't know what the state's gonna do for, to help us, do we?
Nor the federal government, they're still talking about that.
And that could make a big difference in our tax bills.
For sure. The, the good news for Pittsburgh is that we don't rely on any, I don't know if it's good news, but we don't rely on anything but property taxes in Pittsburgh. Other towns have hotels taxes, TIF districts where they get a piece of economic activity, sales, et cetera. So we are only looking to the property taxes.
Well, we really aren't gonna know until the state finally gives us the right, the numbers that we've got to use, what people, what's gonna happen to people's tax bills.
Right.
I mean, if they're, if they're level funded, it's not gonna be too bad, but if people's tax bills jump any amount which it appears they could, uh, that's gonna put a lot of pressure, even more pressure on people.
And as you point out, Dave, eighty percent of most people's property tax bill is education-related.
Right, yeah.
Education plays a part, the biggest part of it and, and the state has, they're in the driver's seat on that.
Complete control.
And we, we just have to do whatever they tell us, which makes it tough.
Yep.
That's why I've asked, that's why I've asked Helen to at least talk to her banker. Not that anybody likes the idea of borrowing, but there may be an education tax payment that we need to pay and we don't, might not have sufficient revenues in yet, because we haven't even sent out a tax bills to get us over that pump. And which has pointed out that there is a new bill that's been approved that will reimburse towns for any interest they pay to do short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes.
Anybody else?
Suffice to say, I'll keep this item on the agenda until we figure it out and hopefully in August.
Yeah, well, I, I read that right, that was our last item for open business.
Yes, it is.
So we will.
You all right?
Hop out of open session and go into executive session.